State University Long Beach.
Hi, I'm Michael and I'm the winner of the glorious month tickets and gala.
Out of the tree of life, I just picked me a plum. You came along and everything started to hum. Still, it's a real good bet, the best is yet to come. The best is yet to come and they won't it be fine? You think you've seen the sun, but you ain't seen it shine. Wait till the warm ups underway, away till our lips haven't met. Wait till you see that sunshine day, you ain't seen nothing yet. The best is yet to come and they won't it be fine? The best is yet to come, come the day of mine. The best is yet to come, come the day of mine. Ah, come the day of mine. I'm gonna teach you the pride. We've only tasted wine. They're gonna scream that cup dry.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Seal Beach Planning Commission. It's Monday, November 17th, 2014. Can you join me with the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Steve Sloan, here. Commissioner Esther Cummings.
Here.
Vice Chair Robert Goldberg.
Here.
Commissioner Patty Campbell.
Here.
Chair Sandra Masse Levitt.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Yes, we have a quorum. Everybody's here.
By motion of the Planning Commission, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda, rearrange the order of the agenda, and provide an opportunity for any member of the Planning Commission or staff to request an item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Is there anyone that wants to move an item?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to advise the Commission to remove item three from the agenda, that is, public hearing regarding conditional use permit 14-7. There was an error on the posted agenda that mistakenly referred, described the item as a CUP to approve live entertainment in a restaurant with a type 47 on sale alcohol license. That is patently not what the item is about. Unfortunately, because the item was posted and was incorrect, there's a danger that it would be misleading and therefore violate the Brown Act. Therefore, I believe that item should be removed from the agenda, in which case it would be renoticed and scheduled for the next agenda. And I did talk with staff earlier today. It was my understanding that they were able to place an ad in the Sun newspaper in time to get it onto the next agenda. That did take a little bit extra reference to staff's part to do that. So though we are, we understand the applicant would like to move forward, legally, in my opinion, you cannot act on this item at this time. And we did what we could to get it onto the next agenda, and it will be heard at that time.
The public hearing will be heard at that time.
Yes. Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers, the notice that went to the residents in the 300 feet circle, did that describe the nature of the CUP properly, or did that also not describe it properly?
I have been told that the public notice that was mailed to the properties within the radius was accurate. The only mistake was in the posted agenda. For public hearings, you need to have both that posted notice or the mailed notice, and the agenda has to be accurate. There are two separate requirements. The notice requirement is a provision of the planning law, and the agenda requirement is a provision of the Brown Act. And the Brown Act requires every item on the agenda to include a brief description of every item that is going to be discussed at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept removing that item from the agenda?
I would move that number three item regarding the Phoenix Salon be removed from the agenda tonight.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Please vote. Okay. Five to zero. That does not obfuscate your opportunity to speak this evening, so if you just hang on for a moment, you'll have an opportunity to get up, talk. And this is a time for oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the Planning Commission regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Commission. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the Commission cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the records. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. I see Seth Eker.
Good evening, Chair Masse Levitt. Planning Commissioners, members of staff, the public, Seth Eker, resident Old Town Seal Beach, consultant on the Phoenix Salon Suites project, CUP 14-7. Though that item has been continued and not open, I wanted to make some remarks during oral communication such that the record could reflect these comments in addition to the noticed, renoticed hearing that will be forthcoming. I'd like to immediately thank KOA, the parking consultant, Phoenix Salon Suites, and Guardian Financial Group for their support in the process of this project. It is terribly unfortunate that a clerical inconsistency in the agenda has created a legal hazard for this CUP process. It's delayed the process unnecessarily for my client and created financial injury and harm. I don't know what the city can do to recompense the applicants, Kimberly and Frank Lopez, really as a result of this delay. I understand we're all human. I understand accidents happen. I understand the legal reality of where we are. But it is frustrating, and I just wanted to share that with the Commission, and I wish that there was something that we could do. I would also like all those in support of the project to please stand and be recognized for the purpose of the Commission. Many of these people have rearranged their schedules, delayed flights, left work early. Go ahead and be seated. The director of the Board of Phoenix Salon Suites, developer, the architect, and others. And it wasn't until this morning that this error was found, and I was the person that reported the error. It's important that the Commission understand our efforts as applicant to bring this project forward since May. I do want to acknowledge staff, particularly Crystal on the Vaso, and also Stephen Fowler for their work on this project. The core findings of the project are clear. A third-party independent parking study verifies that onsite parking is adequate and sufficient with all requested additional stations and the entire proposed fill of vacancy. Phoenix Salon Suites benefits the entire business center and the fellow tenants. It benefits Leisure World and creates an affordable access to independent salon professionals so that they can find work. It's a job creator. Phoenix Salon Suites has successfully occupied multiple buildings and is growing, and Frank and Kimberly have done this in more than just this town. They've done it in Santa Monica, they've done it in Long Beach, and they're doing it again in Long Beach. And you'll see all this detailed in the applicant's statement and also in part in the staff report. I most strongly urge the Commission to approve the recommendation by staff. I thank the Commission and staff for expediting and sending the extra effort to get it on the December 1st hearing, and I would also express deep concern that that would be the last hearing potentially of the year in which it could be heard. So another error of this type would be even more damaging and catastrophic. Thank you for your consideration, and I believe there are some others who wish to address during oral communications. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for Commission for giving us the opportunity to speak. My name's Frank Lopez. I'm actually the son of the owner on this project. We opened in March, and we have two other salon concepts like this. Basically, it's a suite concept that allows a beautician or someone in that profession to own their own business, and that is our, that is our business model and what we strive to do. I would, our franchisee advisor who's sitting behind me will explain what the concept is. But out of 90, I believe there's about 90 locations throughout the U.S. right now that are, that have opened and are completely successful. And this is the first one that has suffered an economic injury, if you will, because of poor planning on somebody's part, who we're gonna find out. But on that, it has been frustrating for us. Again, we've been open since March, and we're hoping that the Commission will look at this report and find that we are able to expand after this with an approval from the Commission. And again, a lot of people, including my father, who's wishing to retire after this, he can't move forward if that's of any benefit to your knowledge. He's 72, and he just spent a half million dollars on something that's not gonna work in its current condition. Again, every Phoenix that we've opened throughout the U.S., completely successful, at least 80% or more full. This is the only one in, you know, the two and a half, three-year history that we've been a franchise to fail, like, almost fail. So we're definitely counting on you to review this application and give it your best consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Moffett. I am a franchisee myself, also partner with Frank Lopez. But I think more importantly, and in this particular scenario, I speak from the corporate side of the Phoenix franchises. I'm on the advisory board, work hand-in-hand with the bevy of VPs that run the company. Frank mentioned there are 75, actually, franchising around the country, 25 in California and the rest, throughout the rest of the country, also opening in UK and Canada in the next year or so. So this is a concept that's expanding greatly, and in the U.S., I suspect in the next six months, we will hit that 90, and probably by the end of next year, surpass the 100 mark. So it's very significant. Forbes 500 franchisee list or franchise list, this has come up for the last three years in a row, is a very strong, popular concept. I've worked hand-in-hand with a lot of the franchisees around the country, in Florida, in Chicago, in Texas, in Illinois, other parts of Illinois, and Michigan. And I can say that this is one of the few instances that this franchise has struggled, that this concept has struggled, and especially for something as, let's say, trivial as parking. Even when I look at locations like what we have in Santa Monica, which is historically a parking nightmare of the city, but then other places like downtown Chicago, and then looking at some of the downtown areas throughout New York and Boston, that are very congested, parking's very difficult. For all intents and purposes, Seal Beach is relatively spacious. We've obviously done the parking study for this particular site, which isn't pertinent to downtown, but obviously a little further away. I've been there many times myself as I helped consult for that site, did a lot of the marketing for that Seal Beach site, and facilitated getting it up and running with the Lopez family. And in the, say, 30 visits I've made there, I've never had anything but front-row parking. So there's clearly plenty of parking there. So I certainly, beyond the parking study, hope you take that into consideration as well. I know that behind me, the two founders of Phoenix, the CFO, the CEO, the head of real estate and the head of construction, strongly back me, they've also provided support letters for this, as have I. And so we're very much hoping that you guys will lean our direction to make sure this gets passed quickly so that the concept can provide the salon professionals the growth that they need and allow the Lopez family to fill this site the way it needs to in order to run properly. Because right now, it's basically a ship with its sails at half-mast, so it's not very effective or efficient. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dina Morgan. I'm the Senior Real Estate Manager for Burnham Equities Incorporated. We are the managing member for Seal Beach Village. We've been, we've owned this property for a very long time, and I've been personally managing this property for eight years. So I've seen the turnaround, and I've seen, you know, the in and outs of the parking and that light. But there, as far as parking goes, we have never had an issue at this location. We are in full support of Phoenix. They, we're their biggest advocate. We really do believe that they can be extremely successful. They add value to our center, and not just financially, but as a service. We are in contact with the Leisure World community, and they have also expressed how exciting and new that Phoenix has brought this great vibe to the center. So we fully support the staff recommendations and the report that Seth has been talking about. So we do recognize that there has been an issue now with the, with the parking, but as far as where we stand, we've never seen any parking incidences or any issues at the property. It will also benefit Phoenix, but it's super important as well for us going forward with new tenancy. So we fully support it, and we really, truly hope that you can take that in consideration as the owners and developers of the property. Thank you.
All right, good evening. David Ream of Westminster. I am currently a graduate student at Cal State Long Beach and was thus hired by Mr. Eker Black Marble Consulting. I spent a majority of my time as the point of contact for the traffic engineering firms which we isolated, KOA, which came recommended by the city. During the process, I had an opportunity to talk to the Lopez family, and during the next hearing, I would be more than willing to answer any questions you have regarding the parking lot study. I just want to take this time to express I am in full support of this project, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. I really want to thank all of you for allowing us to speak this evening, even though we're not on the agenda. I appreciate it. I'm kind of the frontline person. I'm the first person that people see when they walk in the door. So I'm the one who hears the comments from the men and women who walk in the door and say, "Oh, this is such a beautiful place. It's so peaceful, and it's so wonderful, and I'm so happy I'm coming here." And they keep coming back, week after week, or month after month. And especially, it's fun to watch the faces of the people from Leisure World, because the problem that the Leisure World residents have had, who used this facility before when there was a previous salon, the bus doesn't take them to the other side of Westminster. So many of them, because of their age, or because they're on a walker or in a cart, or a cane, they're frightened to walk across the street to Westminster to get over to the other ones. So they're so happy to be at our place, and there's many of the salon professionals who have willingly cut their prices so that these clients can actually have their hair done on a regular basis. And to see the smiles on their faces when they walk out the door and their hair's all coiffed, it just feel good, you know? That's what Phoenix Salon does. It really makes people feel good about themselves. So I know the Leisure World residents aren't the only ones that come to our salon. Each one of our salon professionals has their own client base. So we have a couple massage therapists, we have manicurists, we have stylists, we have estheticians, but we have five empty places that we can't fill up yet, so we really, really, really need your approval as quickly and as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Kelly, and I've been a hairdresser for 27 years, and I worked in Huntington Beach, and I did a booth rental there. And I decided after that time that I wanted to make a change, and I saw this salon one day, and I decided to come over here to Seal Beach. And I'm happy to say that all my clientele from Huntington Beach, Costa Mesa, Garden Grove, all followed me here, and they love it. They love Seal Beach, they're discovering the area, they've been going over the hill, doing shopping, and haven't been in the area before. So I'm happy here. I hope we can stay, and the concept is great, and they've been great to us, and all the other stylists, and some of them aren't here tonight, but they're very happy. So I hope we can stay. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Tammy. Tonight, I'm driving two hour on the freeway from Santa Monica to come down here, because I would like to support Kimberly and Frank. I lost the business before, about three years ago, and I came to La Palma, and I try again. I made it, but being a hairstylist for 30 years, I've been changing so many different salons. It's very difficult, but when I heard the concept of Phoenix Salon, I thought very interesting, and I'm thinking about, that's maybe that's the last chance for me, for my retires. So I moved from La Palma and changing my customer again. Every single time the hairstylist moves and change, is, we take a gamble. But I love this concept, and I love to work with Frank and Kimberly. They very understand, they're very supporting, because we believe in that, you know, if they support us to be success, they will succeed. And also, I love to work with all the lady in Leisure World. It's just sweet, and exactly like Terry say, that I lower my price out so they can afford. And it's very convenient for them to come with the, you know, take a bus to come, and they so happy because the concept, the play is beautiful, you know, for their age, and they can able to live the lifestyle just like all the people out there, you know, anyways. I love to work there, and I hopefully that I don't have to change in, moving my business again, because this is my last try. And I hopefully, would you please consider it to help Frank and Kimberly to solve the problem as soon as possible, so we can study and enjoy the holiday. Thank you for listening, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Now's the time. Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on any other subject on the agenda or off the agenda? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might make a suggestion, to ensure that the comments that were received tonight regarding this item are actually part of the administrative record of the public hearing next week, my recommendation would be for the Commission request of the city clerk, record those comments in some detail, and then they can be included as part of the staff reports, attachments to staff report at the next meeting, so it would actually be part of the record.
Okay. The city clerk has been so notified. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Okay, your comments will be noted in the staff report that comes out next Friday, and we'll see you again in two weeks, and we'll be ready. Do you want to come up and speak?
Good evening. We were at the last meeting from Taco Surf.
Yes.
Last, we left with potential to agendize further action in regards to our entertainment, and we were hoping to speak a little bit about that.
It is on the agenda for later. Is it an opportunity?
That matter is just a discussion item for the Commission. It's not scheduled as a public hearing. If the chair does not plan to take testimony now, this would be the time, or testimony then, this would be the time to take comments on it.
Okay. If you'd like to make comments now, then please go ahead.
Okay. We don't really know how it works.
We have your name.
I'm Lisa Rodden.
Pardon, nurse.
Okay.
Okay, so first of all, we wanted to say thank you so much for approving the acoustic music that we have now in our restaurant. And we were hoping to maybe get some direction from you about where we're supposed to be going in the future. We've had a couple different, couple different ways that we could maybe go about it, one being a zone code amendment, or maybe an overlay, which I don't really know much about. We're still, the acoustic music's been a little helpful, but in order to compete with the surrounding businesses, we're really going to need to get the amplified music back in some way, as you know, we talked about last week, or last meeting, that all the businesses surrounding us do have the amplified music. So we wanted to push forward and try and figure out how to go back to where we were for the past 16 years, hoping you guys could at least point us in the direction. I have been meeting with Crystal and speaking with her, and I brought here the sales and what has been happening since April when we lost the music, and the amount of money that we have lost during that time, not to mention the customers and the whole vibe of the restaurant, but.
We were hoping that, we've been consulting with a member of city council in Huntington to see how, you know, considering that we have the business directly across the street from us that has the entertainment license that goes till 2:00 a.m. or 1:00 a.m., what their restrictions are, how they're able to have their music, how they protect the sound from the neighbors. So she's come to help us out, too. Got a lot of support, members included, from the last meeting, and just... Got a lot of support, uh, members included, uh, from the last meeting and, uh, just, you know, we've got a full restaurant with a bar and families and whatnot, but that two amplified, uh, or unamplified musicians is like being in a coffee house and it's, uh, we still can't draw our customer base back. They're still going elsewhere, so we're, we're losing every weekend and we really won't, we want to play ball the right way with the city and, and we're just hoping that you could direct us on any possibility and on how we could go about doing this. I know that we've never violated, had, had the police department have to come cater to us, so it just seems so weird that I'm not defending anything other than just wanting to create business again.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, I don't know how I, you can help us at this point, uh, we're really open-minded to anything.
Well, we will be discussing this at the end of the agenda. And if you want to hang out and see what we talk about,
Most definitely.
Of course, you're perfectly welcome to stay and I suggest that you do.
Thank you, ma'am.
And you'll have some idea of the direction we'll be going in.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, can we suggest that they have some financial data that they want us to look at that they brought to give to the city clerk?
No, it's not within our purview. Okay, thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Shire Burnett, Madam Chair and honorable commission members. I am a personal friend of Todd and Lisa Maris and I've had the benefit of reviewing the video from the prior meeting. And I'm here tonight, I understand that you'll have a director's report from staff on what the recommendations are moving forward, but from, I just wanted to share with you briefly what I experienced, um, looking at the video, but also I served as planning commissioner in the city of Huntington Beach for eight years, retired from that two years ago, so I feel you, I understand the pressure of the seats that you're in and trying to find a bridge and have a win-win situation between business owners as well as the city staff. I have known Todd and Lisa as personal friends and they didn't share with me till very recently what they've been experiencing with their business. They didn't know my background as a planning commissioner. They, all I have known is that for this past year they've had devastating losses and tremendous stress trying to find their way out of this hole that they didn't know that they were in. They purchased, the father purchased the property with an existing CUP that did involve live entertainment, that did increase the value of that property. And they have a business model with live entertainment that was critical to their business model and they purchased a property with that in place. My experience and understanding of CP is that it goes with the land. And so anytime that as a commissioner we needed to evaluate property and a CUP, we had to treat it with extreme care, as you know, because it wasn't just a simple permit that could be revoked. It goes with the land regardless of the business. It may be different in Seal Beach, I'm not aware, but I am aware that they bought the property with that understanding and that the business owner, uh, partner at that time, something happened administratively where the, the CUP did not continue or was allowed to lapse, I'm not quite sure of the dynamic of that, but the Marises were completely unaware of that. So they've been proceeding for the last 16 years thinking that that was in place without any problem. Um, so I don't know if there's any method which hopefully the director will have some insight, whether it is an overlay or zoning code amendment. I know from my experience when we put things in place, from what I understood it, I know the staff has to do all the labor, but from the commission side, we were led to understand that the overlay was less intensive than a zoning code amendment and I don't know if that's true in the city of, um, Seal Beach. Um, but if there is any way to grandfather them or grandfather them or if there's a way to look at the CUP to see if anything might have been missed there, um, to be able to put it back in place. And I just want you to know that, because it does matter that as individuals, because I didn't know the situation that they had, the financial loss that they've gone through, I, our children go to school together and they as people are absolutely incredible, kind, generous, honorable, and from watching the tape from the last meeting, as a commissioner, I was astounded in a good way, shocked with all the support that they had and the positive words. We're a sister city to yours, close enough, or I'm sure you're aware of our issues downtown and the bars and the horrendous things we encounter, so to hear the other side of it and how an honorable business that doesn't, you know, deceive. As a commissioner, we had plenty of business owners that pulled bait and switches, promised a big, big story and as soon as their permit was in place, their CUP was in place, they went south on it with no intention of meeting the conditions or the ordinances. So to have a business that for 16 years has lived it and proven that they will back up what they say and six to nine for live entertainment, what a dream. That is ama, I've never even heard of that, but the fact that they could make that work is incredible. So, um, I had a brief exchange with Crystal over the phone and I know in our city in Huntington Beach, our city staff was critical to helping us make good decisions. And from my brief exposure to her, I believe you have those resources at hand as well and hopefully we can find a way is to bridge this, to have a win-win because you have an amazing business and amazing city and so if you can make it work, we'd be forever grateful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during oral communication? Seeing no one, we'll close that part of the agenda. Uh, next item is the consent calendar and approval of planning commission meeting minutes of October 6th, 2014. Do we have a motion?
So, so moved.
One second.
Okay, and please vote. Her absten, there is one abstention.
Due to my absence.
Do you have that, Linda? Okay. It's four to one. Minutes are approved. Uh, there are no scheduled matters, new business, minor use permit, uh, at 313 Central Avenue. Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening. Applicant Natalie Murphy submitted an application for minor use permit 14 dash one to permit an interior remodel of less than 25% within a non-conforming structure. The subject site is a 3,872 square foot parcel located on the north side of Fourth Street and is developed with two residential units. The first unit is a single-story residence located towards the front of the property. The second unit is a, um, residential unit located above a single car garage located at the rear of the property. The site is considered non-conforming due to density and parking. The applicant is proposing an interior remodel within the primary residence, which is the unit located at the front of the property. The residence currently consists of a living room, dining room, kitchen, three bedrooms, and one restroom. The applicant proposes to remodel a hallway closet and a portion of the kitchen to create a new full bathroom at the center of the residence. The Seal Beach Municipal Code allows interior wall modifications and remodeling which involves removal of or structural alterations to less than 25% of the structure's interior walls with approval of a minor use permit. The Seal Beach Municipal Code specifies that these interior wall modifications may increase the number of bathrooms. The proposed remodel does not, uh, does not increase the number of bedrooms. The proposed remodel lies within the parameters set by the Seal Beach Municipal Code because the modification is less than 25% of the interior walls and does not increase the number of bedrooms. No new square footage will be created by the remodel as the proposed bathroom remains within the existing residence. The applicant is also the property owner and will continue to occupy the primary residence. After conducting the public hearing, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the attached resolution as conditioned. Staff and applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Were there any comments from the planning commission? No? Okay. Is the applicant here this evening? If you would like to come up and tell us what you're doing.
Hi, my name is Natalie Murphy. I am the homeowner and currently live there. Uh, I live at the property with my husband and two children, so we do have a three-bedroom house, it's less than a thousand square feet. So our desire is to add another bathroom to make it a little more comfortable for all of us.
Okay.
I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Any comments? None? Motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second that. Okay, please vote. Five to zero, you're approved. That's fast. Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our little, uh, study session from the director. Would you like to, uh, start it off, Mr. Basham?
Absolutely. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. Um, as you heard from oral communication, there was some discussion from our last planning commission that ensued in regards to live entertainment, specifically as relates to the excerpts that you have before you this evening from the Seal Beach Municipal Code. The, uh, chapter is chapter 11.4, specifically the section for which is of discussion this evening is 11.4.05.0110 subsection D as in David. And that, that is entitled allowable, allowable incidental business activities. So as you probably have already read through the provisions of that municipal section, it specifically identifies incidental uses that are permitted in conjunction with, uh, primary businesses and commercial zones and specifically prohibited uses. It does identify the following as being prohibited, which is live music and amplified instruments. So at this time, our staff will, will turn it over to the chair, entertain discussion in regards to, uh, this provision of municipal code and the staff and city attorney can provide direction accordingly.
Are there any comments from the other, uh, commission members before I comment?
Uh, Mr. Flower, uh, is this discussion limited to the, uh, the municipal code 11.4.5.10? Or do, or do Taco Surf discussion?
Yeah, well, answer that in two parts. First, the, the, it's not, the discussion is not necessarily limited to this code provision. Uh, I believe the intent of the planning director, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was simply to use that as a starting point for the commission's discussion since it was the key issue when Taco Surf CUP came up. Um, that the code clearly prohibits live music with amplified instruments as an accessory used to a business. Um, that does not necessarily become the end of your discussion as to whether or not further discussion is required or study is needed to, 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 what, to, to, as to whether this provision should stay in place. Um, the second part of my request to you, to your question was, and as I understood it, you were wondering if the commission could discuss Taco Surf's business in particular. Um, I would caution you to tread carefully in the sense that if, uh, Taco Surf were to return for some sort of modification to a CUP or new CUP, you wouldn't, wouldn't be getting into that. And that property in particular is not on the agenda. To the extent that your conversation tonight were to reference the, the proceedings involving Taco Surf, that's perfectly acceptable, but you can't take any action with regard to Taco Surf and I would caution that you don't prejudge what might happen to Taco Surf in the future in case that you do come back to me for you.
Undoubtedly, I'm gonna make a mistake, so you'll, you'll correct me.
I'm, I'm here to help, don't worry.
Thank you.
What basically are their options? What are their options?
Well, if we explore certain planning options, um, it certainly would have to be discussed with the city council. The city council is the authoritative body that could instruct staff to engage, um, in the entitlement process or the legislative process involving any type of amendments to municipal code. So, um, short of getting into in-depth discussion in regards to, um, selecting one particular site for the purpose of creating a, um, a certain activity to occur when it is identified as being prohibited, is being selective in the process, um, which is not, uh, something that is viewed in planning as a, an approach to any type of process. So when you look at adding or deleting something that relates to an activity or something that a business can do or cannot do, you have to also consider the city in its entirety and any other commercial related type of business associated with it because you can't be subjective and make your determination based upon one site only. That can affect every business similar in the city.
What about an overlay?
Again, that's the same process. You're asking for an overlay to be placed over one particular site and for what justification do you have in making such determination? Is it to allow one business to have amplified music? Then that's something that is going to be very subjective in the eyes of staff and for legal purposes and how we came to that conclusion. So you, so you have to look at what is going to be the implications for all similar businesses in entire city. And if you're looking at a property as zone commercial or general commercial in this case, then you are affecting every property that's on Seal Beach Boulevard from the top end of the city and along Pacific Coast Highway. And those properties, um, which is quite different from Huntington Beach, we're much smaller. We only have two commercial designations in our city, just two, general commercial and your specialty commercial. And not like most cities, they don't have, we don't have a diversity of a buffer zone, if you will, where we have the leisure of land being so separated from other type of uses which are considered sensitive or receptive uses. So those are typically the type of uses that are going to have the impact of decisions that we make on commercial or industrial activities. And we don't have properties that are so close or so separated that you have a distance that can create some type of barrier. So you have typically residential that, but commercial zones literally touch each other.
What does Huntington Beach have that allows them to have?
I don't work in Huntington Beach, I can't answer that question, Commissioner Campbell. It is a much larger city, they have an opportunity to designate their land use classifications, uh, probably much better and strategically they can do it where we don't have that luxury. So we see the commercial or the residential. Uh, similar to most, a lot of jurisdiction, they can afford to have a lot of variations in industrial activities and uses. We don't have that variation of activity. We have primarily light industrial, that's, that's primarily professional driven. So, um, we have to consider the type of uses, activities that are in the city and when we do consider any type of change that can affect the community, we have to consider the community as a whole, not one particular parcel.
Surf sign has its own regulations to a large degree because they're so displaced from the city. Is that correct?
The municipal code have development standards that are different because of uniqueness of the size and where they're located. It has to do with the configuration of the property, not necessarily use or activity.
And that's mainly for the residential portion of Surf sign, correct? Agreed.
Yes. Right.
But the, the standards that apply to the, uh, general commercial area Surf sign are the same that apply to the rest of the city? Well, they're definitely part of the city, there's no question about that, but they're, they are considered outliers of sorts and they're unique in the sense that they are isolated, I would think. I would think a variance would be appropriate for that particular location where it might not be for any other business within the city. not be for any other business within the city. Is that?
If I may, a variance is a particular discretionary view process that applies to physical development standards, things like setbacks. What would be the proper approach? The problem is you can't approve a use variance that go to the use to which property is put. So you can't allow a use that isn't otherwise allowed through the granting of a variance. A variance can allow you to develop in order to accommodate some sort of unique physical hardships to the property, but it is about physical hardships to the property and its development. So it's physical standards versus use restrictions, and variances cannot be used for the latter. And just to kind of dovetail on some things the director was saying, really, the problem we have here is defining what the limiting factor would be in a fair and defensible manner in terms of where live entertainment with amplified music would be allowed. Yes, the property is unique, but it's also very, very small. So from a legal and practical zoning perspective, you're coming right up on the concept of spot zoning, which is giving preferential or particularly, especially battery, but to one parcel relative to others. And so courts will look at your justifications, your rationales for creating those limits. So the director's right, you need to think of not just this one property or the two commercial properties are right there. We really would have to take a holistic look at other commercial properties. The same problem runs into the overlay zone. What is, what an overlay zone is a kind of floating zoning designation that says if a property is, in this case, general commercial zone and then meets these other standards, we don't know what those might be, it might be eligible for live music. The problem is defining what those limiting standards are that put properties into that overlay if we were to craft it. As Jim has said, the property, the commercial properties here are limited, and so crafting an overlay zone that is, you know, kind of Goldilocks size, not too big, not too small, and just right, could be, appears to be very difficult. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'll defer to Jim on that point because it is a planning question, not a legal question. But that's the kind of practical and legal difficulty we're looking for, we're looking at with this type of use. Clearly, at one point, the code, when Title 11 was put in place, I actually recall a discussion, it's been some years, but the planning commission did debate whether or not to allow live music with amplified instruments. And they, the planning commission, decided to recommend a version of Title 11 that did not allow it. I think the concern at the time, as I recall, was primarily Main Street because that is the most likely place for entertainment to end up, given the activity there. And it's just so close to the residential properties nearby, there was a real concern that the nightlife scene might get too loud. So, and that's just a little historical perspective to share with you from my own experience. So those are the practical, historical, and legal difficulties we're looking here. So, you know, if you have any further questions, but we're happy to answer, and here are the commission's directionists.
Ms. Cummings, anything? I assume.
Mr. Flowers, you mentioned Main Street. Do these standards that were provided to us, these sections, municipal code apply to Main Street or is Main Street only covered by the specific plan?
Main Street is governed primarily by the specific, Main Street specific plan, but a lot of the standards that are applied general commercial will also apply on Main Street. They kind of work in synergy. Main Street is almost like a set of additional special regulations for Main Street specific plan area. But the general, this provision applies on Main Street to the general commercial properties there.
But does it apply because this is contained within the specific plan?
No. This generally applies to.
Okay. So what we're looking at here does apply to Main Street in and of itself?
It applies to all commercial properties.
Okay. That was my first question. My second question is, and this is sort of a process question, if the planning commission wanted to recommend a change in the zoning code or, not zoning code, excuse me, in this municipal code section to the council, what would be the process, the steps that we would take to make a recommendation to council?
And actually, we'd have to take them by the commission to make such a recommendation. So you would need a majority of the commission to vote in favor of making such a recommendation, the recommendation before it to the city council. So pursuant to our code, any change in the legislative aspects of the zoning code, for example, a zoning text amendment, can be initiated by the city council or by the director or the commission with the concurrence of the city council. So before staff would undertake the study and drafting of any amendment, the council would have to concur with your recommendation. So the process, the straight line would be, the commission makes a recommendation, that recommendation is delivered to the council, the question is, do you concur with this recommendation? If they vote in affirmative, staff would begin the process of drafting it, which would involve not only just the actual drafting of an amendment, which require an ordinance, but it would require some level of environmental review to determine what the impacts of the change would be. And then eventually, public hearing before the planning commission on the changes, another recommendation, whether or not to approve those changes, and then the council would have to act. So it's a process. It has to go up and then back and then back up again.
I understand. And I guess this is a question to the director. That process that was just outlined to us, just approximately, how long does that take? Would that take if it's sort of smooth, you know, six months, eight months, 10 months?
Probably, yeah. Probably six months if the direction comes from city council.
I mean, from the time that we would.
The final enactment.
Time that we would start the process till it goes up and down.
Yeah.
Six plus months.
Yeah, that's fair estimation.
So it sounds like the process that we could undergo if we want to would be to recommend changes to this, and you heard the process. And so really, the relief to the Taco Surf is six plus months, best case scenario, possibly. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I remember a couple of years ago, the planning commission considered Colby Restaurant. They wanted an entertainment permit, which we granted. Spaghetti's has amplified music. I assume, if, I don't remember, but I assume that was under the old code before Chapter 11 was adopted. And then it was permitted then.
That's correct.
Correct?
That, you know, I don't have any direct regulations. That seems a likely scenario.
Yeah. I, I think there are circumstances under which amplified music can be allowed in the commercial zone, and that is through the conditional use permit. And that gives the staff and the planning commission an opportunity to take a look at the ways in which it can be regulated, the hours of operation, maybe, you know, get down to the fine points of decibel levels. You know, it's not impossible. It's being done right now in terms of the businesses that currently have amplified music. I think it is not inappropriate for us to recommend to the city council that they initiate a zoning code amendment. I would be in favor of that. I, I understand the potential for abuse, the, goodness knows, we've had some abuse. But I think it can be regulated through the conditional use permit. Even though the CUP goes with the land, it can be revoked. And I think we ought to take that opportunity now to take a look, another look at this section of the code, particularly this section that talks about prohibited uses and how we can allow some of this. I even think karaoke is fine, you know, with proper regulation. Dancing, my goodness, it doesn't have to be prohibited in the city. It can be a nice amenity that a restaurant could provide in the right location. Conditional use permit would allow these things to be regulated and regulated tightly. So I don't have a problem. And I would like to make a motion that the planning commission notify the city council of our request to modify Chapter 11 dash 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 and specifically allow with a conditional use permit amplified music, karaoke, dancing, and stand-up performances from a stage and amplified performances by singers, musicians, comedians, or magicians. And we should have cut that a long time ago.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for clarification, so you are recommending that, that basically Part II of Part D of that section, instead of being prohibited, they should be, they would all be conditionally permitted uses?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, and I'd like to make a comment. You can probably tailor this to the size of this restaurant. It wouldn't be the first time that a piece of legislation has been crafted in this city that is specific to one particular place. Okay? Just because of our size, everything down here is, excuse me, legally non-conforming. So that's why we have to have all these different rules and regulations because everything is so different down here, anywhere.
And if I may just add one more point of clarification about the process, so there is a motion regarding allowing these with a conditional use permit. The final product that comes out of the planning department's study and review of this and the drafting may look somewhat different. What the commission's voting on now is not the final form of an amendment. It's the recommended starting point for the discussion. The council might have further direction and clarification. And it basically is just a get the ball rolling.
Yes.
And so I would be working with staff on the drafting, and staff would be doing the research to determine how best to actually implement this. So what comes to you later may look more or less like this. Who knows?
And is there any way we can impress upon you the urgency, maybe urgency is too strong a word, but.
Fast-track it.
Fast-track at least the notification to the city council so that they know what we're talking about and we can get a decision from them one way or the other quickly, rather quickly.
I understand we'll have to work with the city manager and the mayor about seeing when that can actually be put on the next agenda.
Okay.
I think the urgency, you're correct, because it's a financial situation. And, you know, how much longer can they hang in there? I'd hate for us to come up with this wonderful piece of legislation for them to say, we're out of business.
Yeah.
That doesn't work. That's why it's got to be.
Unfortunately, I think staff and I all understand the direction on that point. I just do want to remind everybody that we are constrained by, in many cases, by this process, by terms of the government code. They require public hearings before both bodies. Those public hearings are subject to notice. We can't just go past those deadlines. So it can be done expeditiously, but we will be prudent and compliant with all legal requirements.
Okay. And, you know, we're a unique community, and there are no two properties that are alike. There just needs to be an opportunity for some flexibility. Anyway, and can we, you call for the question, the vote?
A little more, a little more to the discussion. I support the concept, and I will vote in favor of it. You know, the problem with this is the devil's going to be in the details always. And I think staff kind of alluded to that because I think the bottom line is a statement that's in the code already in two places, and that is that the accessory use will not result in harm to the adjoining existing or potential residential use due to excessive noise. And that's actually in the code in two different places now, and that's the key thing. I mean, the problem is that from the testimony we've received, loosening the code will obviously work in Surfside for the Taco Surf. And maybe there is another place or two where it would work, but there's probably two or three places where it wouldn't work. So I support the motion, and I look forward to the process and having public hearings and studying it and getting comment and really coming up for something that works for Seal Beach and works for the residents, protects their interests, as well as allowing entertainment and enjoyment of these places, as well as them to thrive financially. So with that comment, I will support the motion.
Okay. Let's vote. Five to nothing.
I would also like to strongly suggest that if Mr. Basham and our city attorney have not visited this establishment, they need to.
I've been there for lunch several times. I'm usually not here in the evening these days.
Good.
I like the chimichanga.
It's a little bit after the fact, but I'm curious as to know why this was instituted in the first place, prohibiting dancing and karaoke, live music.
Some of that may have been carried over. I don't recall the price, all the details of the discussion we had when Title 11 was adopted, but the live entertainment, I do remember that being part of the discussion when the planning commission was reviewing Title 11. So that was, what year was that? Anybody else recall?
2010.
2010, but the process was probably, the conversation could have been 2008, 2009 because it was such a long process.
Yeah.
I mean, if these are indeed accessory business activities secondary to the primary, i.e. a restaurant, and we have noise ordinances in place that are applicable already, I don't understand why these were put in place. Maybe I'll learn more as the process continues.
There are all kinds of ways to attenuate the noise created by the music, and I think.
And we have an ordinance that enforces those as well.
We'll work with it. We'll work with it. Okay. So at least you know it's moving ahead. It might take a few months, but at least we're moving. All right. The next item on the agenda is the commission, oh, Mr. Director, do you have anything else you need to let us know about?
No, I think that's good.
Okay. Commission concerns, anything? Commissioner Campbell? Nope. Sloan?
Can we have a status on the pier? That's a broken record on my part, I know.
There's not much to add at this time. The geotech and structural engineers are attempting to engage in the actual study of the surface of the pier. The waters have been pretty rough, so it's very difficult for them to get under there and stay steady to make their thorough assessment. But we're hoping to get at least a draft determination from their assessment within a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goldberg?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Nothing.
And I have nothing. And we will adjourn the planning commission to December 1st.
Okay. On behalf of the entire planning commission, congratulations to our chair. She will become a member of the city council.
You very much. It'll be great being.